This time I'd like to ask Pastor Roland Fuller to come forward, please, and deliver our indication. Goodness.
I am actually a substitute for my unfortunate person who has had to hurt her back while working on the yard today. So, I got the last minute call, please help out. So, you know, but I pray you really do what your spittrags. That's right. Heavenly Father, we thank you that you have provided out of all people of Coffee County able people, empowered them to be God fearing people, through taking consciousness that they be just in fulfilling their official duties with wisdom, understanding, and discernment in the service of the people. Bless this commission and theirs this evening, and bless the prosperity of Coffee County in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you. If not, whatever. Please.
Blessed be the decision to abide under the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our main board of commissioners meeting. And at this time, we'll have a roll call, please. Now, I welcome the public tonight. Thank you for being here. Words are crowded in that instance, but I'm glad that the few that are here are here. So, at this time, let's weigh it, please. Eighteen present. Thank you. Out of number five, we will at this time have our agenda approved. Before we do that, I have one amendment to add to our agenda tonight. A motion from the amnest authority to the full commission to accept the old drop class of building from the 911th commission.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion by second. Second, motion second, any discussion? There being none, let's please vote on the revised agenda. That will be added as, I guess, ten B. Eighteen yes, thank you. Okay. Oh, excuse me. A review and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Now, a motion to accept.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Major Shelton, second by Jackie Duncan. Discussion. There being none, let's please vote on the motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Eighteen yes. Thank you.
Seven A, resolution 2017-11, resolution in honor and recognition of Buster Bush for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Buster Bush earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as a member of the Consolidated Countywide Industrial Board of Coffee County from 2005 until 2017, and on the Manchester Industrial Board prior to the consolidation. Whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved therefore that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Buster Bush for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that Buster Bush receive a copy of this resolution and a copy be maintained on the file as permanent record, passed and so ordered this ninth day of May 2017.
Buster Bush, thank you, sir, for your service.
Yes, I'd like to mention Mr. Bush right here, he's in the audience tonight, and he's served the event before for many years, and I really appreciate his service.
Thank you. Now, motion to approve the resolution. Vote for my major, second by Cameron Martin. Discussion. Let's vote, please, on that resolution. Again, Buster, thank you for all of your years of service to this county.
Seven B, resolution 2017-12, resolution in honor and recognition of Carl Bone for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Carl Bone earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as a member of the Consolidated Countywide Industrial Board of Coffee County from 2010 until 2016. Whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved therefore that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Carl Bone for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that Carl Bone receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on permanent file, on file as a permanent record, passed and so ordered this ninth day of May 2017.
Carl is here in the office as well tonight, so Carl, thank you, sir, for your service to this county for all those years. Now, a motion to the board of commissioners. Second by Jackie Duncan, by Kim Sturfield. Discussion. Let's vote, please. Motion passes. And Carl, thank you again, sir.
Seven C, resolution 2017-13, resolution in honor and recognition of Elmer Morris for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Elmer Morris earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as a member of the Consolidated Countywide Industrial Board of Coffee County from 2010 until 2016. Whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved therefore that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Elmer Morris for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that Elmer Morris receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record, passed and so ordered this ninth day of May 2017.
Thank you, officer. And Elmer is not here tonight. We also appreciate his service to this county for those years as well. Now, a motion to accept the resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by...
I'll say it.
Second by... Thank you, Rosemary. Discussion. Let's vote, please. Eighteen yes, thank you.
Seven D, resolution 2014-14, resolution in honor and recognition of Dr. Richard Cole for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Dr. Richard Cole earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as a member of the Consolidated Countywide Industrial Board of Coffee County from 2010 until 2017. Whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved therefore that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Dr. Richard Cole for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that Dr. Richard Cole receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record, passed and so ordered this ninth day of May 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. And Dr. Cole is not here to see us, but we certainly appreciate his service to our county. Thank you.
Seven E, resolution 2017-15, resolution in honor and recognition of Mary Dieter Hauser for, I'm sorry, I have a mistake there, her devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Mary Dieter Hauser earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as a member of the Consolidated Countywide Industrial Board of Coffee County from 2005 until 2017, and was also a member of the Manchester Industrial Board prior to the consolidation. Whereas her tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved therefore that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Mary Dieter Hauser for her outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that the family of Mary Dieter Hauser receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record, passed and so ordered this ninth day of May 2017.
And we certainly all thank Ms. Mary for her friendship over the years, and her family, Mike is here tonight, and your sister, Amy Lynn, and we are, you're honored for your presence, and we thank you for being here, and thank, thanks to Ms. Mary for all and the family for all her years of leadership in this county. Thank you. Motion by Mark Cameron. Second by Rosemary, I mean by Cameron, excuse me. Discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. Eighteen yes. Let's give Mike and sit for him. Make standing, raise your hand if you all were honored here tonight.
Seven F, resolution 2017-16, resolution in honor and recognition of William F. Johnson for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas William F. Bill Johnson earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as a member of the Consolidated Countywide Industrial Board of Coffee County from 2005 until 2017, and was also a member of the Manchester Industrial Board prior to the consolidation. Whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved therefore that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Bill Johnson for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion. Second by Jackie Duncan. Discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. And is there any family member here that represents the Johnson family? Many thanks to him for his service in this county for all. By, here on major.
Seven G. Resolution 2017-17, resolution in honor and recognition of Richard Darrell Welch for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Richard Darrell Welch earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as Coffee County Sheriff's Deputy and Emergency Management Agency Officer from 2006 to 2017. Whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved therefore that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Richard Darrell Welch for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that the family of Richard Darrell Welch receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record, passed and so ordered this ninth day of May 2017.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Approve.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Seven, second. Few more. Seven seconds. Discussion. I'd say there is a third or a fourth. Let's vote, please. And tonight is below my target. You see?
Seven H, resolution 2017-19, resolution in honor and recognition of Jesse Wesley Lewis for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Jesse Wesley Lewis earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as the Coffee County historian for over 20 years. Whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved therefore that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Jess Lewis for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that the family of Jess Lewis receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record, passed and so ordered this ninth day of May 2017.
A motion?
Make a motion.
By Diane Arden, second by, I think, major raises his hand. Discussion. And I don't believe Joanna's here tonight, or even your family. Discussion, okay, let's vote, please. And we certainly appreciate his service as our historian for many years.
Seven A, resolution 2017-19, appreciation for city animal control. I think Rosemary's going to read this one.
Whereas members of the Coffee County Board of Commissioners may wish to recognize outstanding accomplishments and/or appreciation for service to the county by groups or persons other than elected official, county employee, and member of county boards and commissions under resolution 97-20, the procedural rules of the Coffee County Commission, Rule 1, Section 8, Number 4. Resolution of commendations for outstanding accomplishments and/or appreciation for service to the county by groups or persons other than those referred to in one and two may be introduced under the sponsorship of two members of the Coffee County Board of Commissioners. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Coffee County Health, Welfare, and Recreation Committee wish to express their appreciation to Dakota Baldwin and Craig Boyd, employees of the City of Manchester Animal Control, for going beyond the call of duty, caring for the animals at the Coffee County Animal Control Facility during this time of transition of staff at the county facility.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second by Jackie Duncan. Discussion. Let's vote, please. And I would like to say to the full commission that we have two, we had two county officers, both have resigned over time, and these two gentlemen from the city filled in big time, doing a lot of stuff in that transition period, digging forward, helping out, and I certainly appreciate the hard work that they did and all they did to help the county facilities and those animals in there during that critical time. I'm trying to get motion to the system.
A, elections appointed to confirmation. A, notaries.
Rush your desk, you can have it.
I make a motion for the notaries listed on our sheet to approve.
Second, second over here. Okay.
Are there any other notaries that are on there that we are not aware of? Are there any other notaries that are there that we're not aware of, that are on that list that we're not aware of? Okay, then I'll second the motion.
Second motion. Rosemary, don't worry, say it. Third, okay. Okay, let's vote, please.
Does anyone want to change their vote?
Eighteen yes, thank you.
A, the county historian. Joanna Lewis, who replies her husband, Jess Lewis.
That's the recommendation, Joanna, replace her husband. Now, a motion?
Will be approved.
Motion by Jackie, second. I miss the D for it. Discussion. Okay, let's vote, please. I'd want to certainly thank Joanna for her willingness to do that, and she and Jess and all that team that have served so much in their historical society and all that they've done.
Anyone want to change their vote? Eighteen yes.
Eight, six, other, I don't have any. Nine, unfinished business. TM, new business, resolution 2017-20, resolution to reduce the speed limit on a portion of 16th Model Road, Coal Ridge Road.
Now, a motion to approve that reduction in speed limit?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, she's on rural bridge meeting, she's, they voted that, second by Mississippi Ford. Discussion.
Oh, yeah, I would just like a little bit of discussion from that, from rural bridges, about that.
Okay, we had subjects on the 16th Model Road and Coal Ridge Road, and they were advising that there was a lot of speeding on that road between Shelltown Road and Kathy Ridge Road on 16th Mile, pretty much the whole road of Coal Ridge Road, and they advised that they would buy the signs and put them up to try to reduce the speed on the roads. They've had a bus that almost had an accident because somebody speeding several people. There's been several accidents on 16th Mile Road, just the straight edge, straight part of the road there. So, we advised them that we would move through Rapid Bridge, and we went through law enforcement also, and everybody approved it, so that's where we are.
What's the speed going to be?
Um, Shelltown and Kathy Ridge Road on 16th Mile is going to be 45, and Coal Ridge Road will be 40.
Okay, all right, thank you. Now, are there any speed limit signs there now?
There's not any right now, but they are going to get them, and then the road superintendent said he would put them up.
But the residents are buying the signs, and county road parts are pleasant.
Appreciate your support on that, because I know it's dangerous roads.
Yeah, I remember, a lot of roads are very dangerous. Thank you, thank you. Rural Bridge for your, for doing that, and the concern that those people are especially looking at.
Who's the sponsor on this resolution?
I'll be the steady sponsor.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Mary. Rosemary, were you and Stephen sign as sponsors of the...
Yes, sir.
That wasn't signed. Yeah, she made, Stephen made a motion. Second motion? On the resolution nineteen, on appreciation of City Animal Control, I think Stephen made a motion. Okay, Jackie, second. Okay, let's, let's vote please. Okay, I'll begin.
T and D, budget amendments.
First one's one twenty-two twenty seventeen eighteen, increase unassigned fund balance by six thousand seven thirty-three for increased expenditure to purchase a vehicle for the sheriff's office. Increase the fund balance at three hundred and thirty-three thousand two thirty-five. Number one seventy-one seventeen nineteen, this is for education capital projects. These projects were budgeted during twenty seventeen, the budget, if you will look on page forty in your budget book, you'll see they were budgeted with the surplus that was in that fund. These projects have been completed. Next one, one seventy-one twenty seventeen twenty, these were projects in the capital, general capital projects fund that we budgeted. On page ten on our tax levy, we budgeted three point eight cents for projects, and this is a list of the projects that were funded. That leaves our remaining fund balance for this year one hundred and one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Next one, one oh one twenty seventeen twenty-one, this is the amended budget for twenty seventeen. Details all the transfers and mostly grants and other items that have come in during the year. There's no change to the fund balance, it's still two million two hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and ten dollars. That is all for this portion.
That's important, important. Do I have a motion to approve those amendments as presented?
Excellent.
Motion and second by Bobby Brennan, okay. Motion by Senior General. Discussion? Okay, let's vote please.
Those were approved by Budget and Finance on April twenty-seventh.
Okay, thank you.
These are for the school board. These were also approved on April twenty-seventh, Budget and Finance. Number one forty-one twenty seventeen three. There's no change to fund balance, this one remains at two million eight hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. That is the general purpose school fund. The second one is for Fund one forty-three, which is the food service fund. One forty-three twenty seventeen dash one, also no change to fund balance. Fund balance estimated six hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars.
And let's vote please. Good deal, motion, motion by Major, second by Tim Morris. Discussion? Okay, let's vote please. And the committee will review the vote and vote.
T and D, motion from the ambulance authority to the full commission to accept the old drivers license building from the nine-one-one commission.
Motion by Mr. Ken, second by Kimberly. Discussion?
Let me go have a quick discussion. The nine-one-one came to the ambulance authority and asked us to consider taking over that building. One reason is we use it a lot for training, and it's one of the few places that we have available that will handle our training needs. The second is it's in an enclosed area for controlled access, and ambulance is one of the people who could do it. As part of that, that's where we take our ambulances when they go on standby between Tellahoma and Manchester area. And that would give us a place that we could actually take a vehicle, park a vehicle, turn it off, and go inside and have facilities for those people, so they're not just sitting in the vehicle with the running. Beyond that, it gives us a capability, should we lose a facility due to storm damage or fire or whatever else would happen, it would provide a backup facility. There's not a place there that would give us conditioned space for an ambulance, if you would, but it wouldn't take very much money to run some electric out there, so you could plug the ambulance in and run all of its charging and power systems, and thereby be able to keep the ambulance at that temperature and maintain it at that. So there's a lot of advantages to us. The cost, it would be a transfer of the facility to us. They've done a lot of work on it over the last several years, so it's in really good condition. And I can't remember what the budget number was, but it's about a few thousand bucks a year, it's like ten, twelve thousand bucks a year for the utilities, and then depending on what our insurance rate is compared to what they had before, so it's a fairly good opportunity, but since it would become county property, the ambulance authority felt that it should come to the full commission, because that would be county property.
Want to pass opportunity, ask more questions. I might add something. So is the current ambulance building going to be closed down?
No, this is just a building which we have used over the years, Russ. They've let us use it for some training because of the openness inside of it, and it has some facilities that would let our drivers go in and not sit in the vehicle out there with the truck running the entire time while they're on standby.
Okay, is it, would it require being manned full-time?
No, it's just a, it's a standby facility, and it would then be a backup facility should something go wrong and we had to find a place to put somebody, you know. If we had lost Tellahoma North with the storm, we'd probably be okay, because we have Tellahoma South that has enough bays to handle the ambulances. If we lose Tellahoma South, we can't house everybody in Tellahoma North, so that backup would be available, and we could then let the people actually go to that standby position and still provide service.
Uh, Mr. Kelly, I definitely appreciate your transparency and, you know, giving us all of your information that you have on this and letting us know what we're voting on. So I just want to say that I appreciate that very much, because sometimes that doesn't happen, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mark, for that analysis.
Uh, Mr. Kelly, has Capitol Alley looked at this and discussed it? Ms. Bryan, I had asked Mr. Morris if that needed to be built into Capitol Alley. He did not feel that it needed to. They were, I did discuss it, we did go over the information with them, and he said the ambulance authority was fine and that they would support it, and I'd let Mr. Morris speak for that.
And Roberts also looked at the building, give it a point bill of health policy.
Also, you're adding it to the county insurance policy. It would not be on the ambulance authority policy. That's probably another reason why you wanted to bring those commission.
It would probably be on, not the ambulance, but on the. So, yes. Again, we wanted to come to the county, and again, it would become county property, so this commission ought to have a vote, do they want us to make that new program?
Thank you, Mark, for bringing the request to us. Any further discussion? If not, let's vote on the motion, please.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Okay, motion passes.
Reports of special committees. Budget committees.
We're certainly moving well down the budget panel. So far, it's going well, it's a little bit scary. As we get closer to the finish line, I know there's some departments, some areas that will be, start snagging us, so, again, I think for next meeting, next Tuesday, so, please take it you can.
Legislative committee.
Uh, we are still looking at the public records policy, trying to govern the policy there, and we're looking at CTS model and also looking at some things that are rather specific to our county that we might want to make some changes with. Mr. Husky is currently reviewing that and looking at it, and is going to bring some suggestions and recommendations to the next legislative committee meeting, and if you have a good chance, feel free, I'm sure the mayor's office can give you a copy of that, CTS model, and if you have any suggestions or anything, we'd certainly like to hear from you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a meeting this Thursday, about five.
At the jail.
Yeah, at the jail.
Capitol Alley.
We don't have any new, new things discussed at that.
How about our recreation?
Uh, once again, I'd like to say how much we appreciate, kind of reiterate how much we appreciate Manchester Animal Control for stepping in when they did to help us out in a kind of crisis, but we thank them much.
Personnel compensation. Uh, reports of special committees.
Can I ask a question here?
Yes.
Way side acres, as I understand, the revenues hasn't come in sufficient to pay all of the bills, so they're open on that at this time, and that could create some real issues if we're not paying the prisoners that are keeping for the services that are being rendered. Is there a plan moving forward? Does this commission need to take action, is an entire commission to raise the rates out there so that we can pay the bills that are being incurred? You know, we can't use county money for that.
That's true.
So how are we going to solve things because we don't have the revenue? And we've got another month, two months here, and if it rains, we're going to have problems.
Mayor, would you like to get a speak on?
Yes.
On anything? Uh, I think you need to start this off as far as what we're going to be, Wes Warren Biola thing, and then I will chime in if you want to discuss what's going on there, and then I'll chime in with the Gerald family.
We've been in some discussion with Wes Warren regarding the takeover of that, talked with Tim Heldon, the manager, yesterday, and he mentioned that last Friday they had an engineer or two out there on site reviewing soil quality or whatever, and I think yesterday they said that engineers felt the soil quality was better than they thought, and they're in the process of reviewing, or coming up with a, reviewing their data right now from an engineering standpoint, and Stephen will take over at this point, we're on.
Yeah, I mean, as far as like the Gerald family goes, I understand where they're coming from as far as not wanting us to rescind the resolution, but they understand business is business, and they're okay with that. You know, they know that we need to get this done as far as like the way side acres goes, but there's other things pending where they don't really want to chime in on that, but they're saying business is business, so if we go forward with rescinding the resolution, I think we have to support that and then go forward from there.
One of the criteria they have listed is that they will not take that over until the commission rescinds the resolution that was passed over a year ago in support of the Gerald family.
Yes, and, and, like I said, I talked to them, and someone else may want to speak to that, but I, I've talked to the director of that board, and I understand business is business, and the county needs to, needs to do, to go forward, and I think they'll be okay with that going forward.
But now Wes Warren has not made any offer of any kind, it's very true, the general department, that is one of the criteria, they said that they will not pursue the takeover of that until the public commission rescinds the resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
And I know that's, that's pretty tough, yes.
You know, I feel if it's a decision of this commission rescinding that resolution, I don't feel we should do that until we have formal acceptance of the transfer of property, you know, to the.
And I agree, I agree with Mr. Bryan wholeheartedly on that, especially with everything that families went through in this whole situation, and I think they would feel more comfortable with that, and I agree with what Mr. Bryan is saying on that.
Glad to answer your question.
And thank you, well, thank you, and I appreciate Mr. Bryan asking that.
That is true. That's not good, I totally agree. And I did get a call yesterday from an entity in North Carolina, they, this guy is the president of Tennessee Waste Services, or Water Services, and he did mention that they would have some interest in pursuing the special about, you know, taking over or buying that.
Could I get third type of question, on what Mr. Kelly said, I design on?
That's right, as I understand that we've had, we've got some work done over the normal course of issues that have arisen out there, and that there are people who have money due them, but because there's not sufficient funding, they can't be paid, and I don't know what the total amount of that is, but it's more than just a few hundred dollars, if I understood.
Well, Roberts made a, his report the other day, and his request, we could not pay all of that, and I did talk with him, he said he would just have to wait until revenue came in to pay that. That's the only bill I know of that is unpaid at this time, but he's aware of that.
Rough idea, how much we owe, and it's left over?
That's eight hundred, eight or something.
Eight hundred to him, and is there any other invoices due beyond that? Thank you.
He billed twenty-nine hundred, almost three thousand.
That makes up, I guess Capitol Alley needs to, to, to put that, if you agree, Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd just like to make sure we have a plan, and Capitol Alley is a good place to start it, but I'm open to anything, I'm just trying to understand where we are and what that.
Absolutely, I agree too, we've dealt with this issue for too long, so I understand, thank you.
Can I make a comment? Before I resign from the water and wastewater authority, there was a plan submitted to the state for increased rates, and also included adding sixteen people that are actually on the circle that need to be in the system, because some of their systems are coming out to the ground also. But it was a complicated plan, and so stated in budget budgets, we didn't have full support, so it was tough to get that plan, but the plan, this plan is at the state, we could go ahead and increase the rates now without the commission voting on it, because the Water Wastewater Authority did approve a plan, and it was sent to the state, so they have one, but in discussion with the mayor, he really kind of wanted to put that on. But in discussion with the mayor, he really kind of wanted to put that on the back burner for the time being, but because we need the money, and I, you know, offered to get that coordination together, but that's kind of where that is now. But they do need to have increased rates out there, and it would be a change, you know. And they did get letters back in the summer for increased rates, but it wouldn't be those rates, it would be different rates because of the difference of the clientele that would be on the system. But the plan is there to do, the letters can be done. The mayor doesn't have the personnel to do that, because it was quite a bit of tedious work to coordinate all that. But anyway, my suggestion is we really need to go ahead and do those rates, and we can do that without even this commission voting on that.
Rush.
Functionally, right there, we have a request to rescind the resolution, we have a budgeting operating request. So, functionally, what committee is taking the lead on the Water and West Water Works for this account?
There is no committee present to take the lead on that.
Well, we'll be sitting here in June or July, waiting at the end of the meeting to have, is this how it works? We've got to either sign it to a functioning committee that can pull some things together, or, because this is too large a body weight, and we don't have resolutions drawn, if we need some. I mean, Margaret, what standing committee are you on?
I'm not on any standing committee. I'm just on the Water and West Water Authority, but, you know, technically, the Water and West Water Authority, even though the mayor coerces the members to, you know, to disband that authority, the commission has not disbanded the authority. We, you know, we did talk about that a couple of meetings ago. But technically, the authority is still in effect, we just need to put new members on there and let that group carry on. That's the most logical.
I'd like the mayor to speak on that.
And I've checked, I haven't found anyone that has yet agreed to serve on that authority, since it was, we were down to two members. And the state says you can't vote for two members only, and that's where we are.
Well, I'll still go back to the question. I don't know, do we have any chair of any committee would like to pull this in, or that feels comfortable with, and that's why I was wondering.
Don't everyone volunteer once?
I mean, that's why I wondered, if you are, you understand.
You know, I mean, I sort of, to me, I think legislative would probably be the best committee to take care of this. I don't know, I mean, I know several committees, but if the other members of legislative would agree, I mean, I think, I think this committee would take care of this.
Which committee, Stephen?
Legislative. And Mr. Bryan is chairman of that.
I'm chairman of that committee, and I don't intend to speak for the rest of the members of that committee, I'll just speak for myself. I'm not interested in legislative committee taking it. And I don't believe any of the committees of this commission are going to be able to handle what needs to be done there and take care of. We need to do whatever's necessary to get a member back on the Water and West Water Authority, and let the Water and West Water Authority do what it's set up to do and what it can do. We don't need another committee of this commission. There, no committee is going to take the time necessary to deal with that, and no other committee wants that obligation. And I feel the Water and West Water Authority is in place, it's there, and we need to get another member on it. Want to weigh it up?
Mayor, and then we had one of those meetings with the state, and they tell us basically that it really, the commission didn't really have it into that Water and West Water Authority while it existed, it's a challenge.
You know, I would like to ask Ms. Cunningham to reconsider her resignation, and she has done an unbelievable amount of work in regard to this Wayside acres. Nobody in here realizes how much effort and time and work she's put into it. And it would be in as good a condition as it is today if it wasn't for her and her individual efforts and all the time she's spent. And she knows the background of it. I would like to ask Ms. Cunningham to reconsider and come back on that committee, and hopefully we can resolve this matter in a reasonably short period of time.
I would consider that, but I have to have the support of the mayor's office.
You got that support, Margaret.
And, well, I mean, people come and complain, they're going to do it. We'd have to have backing that you'll say, the authority, the authority to do this, and you're going to have to back us, otherwise.
I agree with that.
Mayor Cordell, how many, how many members have resigned and how many?
Three.
Okay.
Three have resigned.
So, if this Cunningham agrees to rescind her resignation or come back, what do we need to do?
I think the other two, I think the other two would agree to continue serving.
I'm sorry?
I think the other two would agree to continue serving.
Which other two is that?
Mr. Duncan, Mr. Sykes, but I'm not sure Mr. Sykes wants to continue.
Because you have to have enough to have a core.
He said he would the last time we talked.
Well, Mayor, I mean, I want your thoughts on this. I want your honest thoughts on this.
Well, the authority has been established years ago, now there's a lot of issues there that's, you know, lingered on over the years.
I understand.
It should have been handled in years ago.
I just.
I'm starting to wonder if the authority.
The Wayside acres and several other issues, I mean, you know, me personally as a commissioner have been dealing with this for a long time and several other things, and I mean, I've been with it for a long time, and she's spent a lot of time with this, and I know you can get a lot of the flak for that, and me as a commissioner, I try to spend as much time as I can on certain things. We need to resolve this as quickly as possible, as efficiently as possible. So, I think this needs to be resolved.
I don't disagree with that.
And one thing, I thought you think in general need to understand, the Water and West Water Authority has done their job. Coffey County has done, been over backwards to deal with this matter. The state of Tennessee actually has their responsibility in this matter.
Okay.
In regular speed, for example, what a guy does is check the facts. Okay, they backed away from something that was totally their responsibility, and dumped it on Coffey County. And Coffey County has done their best to deal with this matter. And I think they've done everything that they could. The state has repeatedly changed their demands. You know, they actually have responsibility, and they turn around and start putting demands on Coffey County to do this and do that, which is adding insult to injury, in my opinion, but we can't do anything about it. They tell us one thing today, and a lot later, they change, and people that spend all that authority nonsense what to do. But if we get another member on, and I think that authority really operates pretty much as an entity, to its sake, and it's been authorized by this commission to make decisions. And if we get another member on that committee, that committee can move forward and they can make decisions without even feeling this part, is not understanding.
And again, with the Warren Biola rescension, if that's the way that they feel that needs to go, I think this, I think they would support that, and I think this commission would support that. We just need to make sure that everything is dealt with properly, and I would love to see the mayor's office, and if we do, if the West Water Authority comes back, we have to have transparency, and you guys have to work together. And I would see that.
On any discussion with them, if they, is this commission ready to say to them that if they come together and everything clicks on their end as far as their proposal or whatever, and the only item to resolve is the resolution or the motion here to rescind that resolution that was passed over a year ago, is this commission ready to do that? Or they told me yesterday that if the commission aren't ready to do that.
I'll make a motion for the rescension there right now, but we got to deal with that tonight.
And I was asking the legislative finance to proceed with the special committee, in which I have to do it.
Whatever committee needs to do, we just, this is something we need to deal with, and we need to take care of, with other issues we have going on. I'm tired of things going six months, three months, six months, twelve months, we need to really deal with these issues. So, I think, I think the Gerald family is okay with us rescinding that, and whatever we need to do from there on, whether it's go through, you know, a new Water and West Water Authority or another committee, I talked to them, we just, we really need to get this resolved.
I totally agree.
I do think it's going to be a slow, even if West Warren wants to do it, I mean, it's been a very slow process, I see it still being a slow process, that's probably why it's a good idea to go ahead and get the rates increased and get on with it and not stand around and wait on some other company, because it's bigger than the Gerald family, you know, it's talking about eminent domain that's passed the Gerald's, but be that here or there, but we do need, we do need to go ahead and get the rates increased.
I understand that, and all I can do is speak on what I've been aware of as far as us, you know, doing away with the resolution for the Gerald family. And I understand business is business, so I, you know, right now, I'll make a motion to resolve that, to rescind that.
Exactly, on West Warren.
I will make a motion to rescind the resolution in support of the Gerald family on West Warren, on the West Warren Biola issue.
Yes, sir.
Please feel closed your question.
If it leads to closure with, with West Warren, like Mr. Bryan had said.
Let's take a look at his weight on that.
There are a couple of things in regard to this issue. First off, this issue was not on the agenda. So, in order to deal with this tonight, it will take two-thirds of votes to put it on the agenda. And once, if that passes and get on the agenda, a motion to rescind requires a self-explanatory if it was on the agenda and notification was given ahead of time. Since it was not on the agenda, then the motion to rescind which passed tonight would require two-thirds of votes this way. Those are two items to consider in dealing with this. To deal with it first, you might have to have a motion to add to the agenda, that would require two-thirds of votes.
I'll make a motion to add it to the agenda tonight.
So, a motion to add it to the agenda. That'll do a roll call again.
Stephen, I believe we ought to wait, I don't think we need to act on anything on that tonight. I'm not ready to vote on that, I think we need to just wait, and I would recommend us withdraw it, not try to put it on tonight, I mean, just my opinion.
Well, I'm okay with that, I mean, I just, like I said, I know, I know Mayor Cordell and Margaret and myself and several others have dealt with this issue in depth, and we just want to get it right and do it right and get it taken care of, because we have several other issues coming aboard. But I agree with Mr. Sheldon, I'm okay with that.
So, you withdraw your motion.
Let me ask one question in all that. Mr. Bryan, I think when we did the original motion and approved it, it went through legislating, so I agree with Major Sheldon, I think it's one of those issues that somebody ought to look at, because it is, there's a lot of complications, there's a lot of issues, and make sure we get the language correct so that it is a conditional, you know, everyone is in agreement, you know. If, and only if they accept it, then more or less, it's a, it's a resolution to approve a future resolution based upon the actions that take place, the conditional kind of thing. And I think that may be an appropriate way to think about it.
Mr. Kennedy, we'd be glad to look at legislative, I think that's a good point you made there, because I think part of that motion should include that we're doing this at their request, and I don't see any problem in that being part of this motion, because this resolution goes beyond just this stand too, and we can get to talk about eminent domain, you know, that's a touchy issue, a lot of people. And this commission really just took a preference position that we just, we're letting people know, public know what our feelings were in regard to that eminent domain issue, so it wasn't any fine. And obviously, there wasn't, because my understanding is, in the final analysis, it was ruled in West Warren's favor with the eminent domain.
Yes, sir.
And that has been litigated and finalized, so this is sort of after the fact, so I agree with you, and I feel part of that language needs to say that we're doing this at their request in order to facilitate this business arrangement.
And that court decision was handed down by the peddled level back in October.
Has West Warren started construction of the Gerald property yet?
Not to my knowledge, I think they're doing, they were going to do some core drilling, I don't know where they are, all their engineering coming out.
They have not started yet.
They have, okay.
So, Mr. Kennedy, you dislike legislative, your request is that we just put together a resolution to deal with this rescension.
Yes, sir, I think it needs some real discussion, and like I said, I think the last one came through legislating, and to me, that seems like the appropriate place that ought to come back and make sure that we're on the same page. I don't mind taking that action, particularly when we know that the courts have already ruled in one direction, but I sure don't want to be changing our position if there's not some benefit to this community in making such a change.
Mr. Kelly, you're correct, I'm certainly legislative committee, I know that committee, so I would make a motion that it goes through the legislative committee.
Do you need a motion or just simply refer it to them?
I think you refer it to the committee.
Yes.
Does this require, pardon the word, does this require change in the agenda?
Just simply refer it.
This is a passing procedure, I don't think, I don't think much.
Just simply refer it to legislative. And we'll proceed with whatever plan. I said we will proceed researching whatever plan that we can come up with. That's what you want, to try to get another big or two on there. That's the will of this commission.
Is that something we need to vote on?
No, I just, legislative.
Okay, as member of legislative committee, I'll vote for it.
And I will back what Bobby said and reinforce how much work Margaret has done on that committee, and I would wish that she, with her knowledge, would make, she signed the one that we have there.
Yeah, absolutely, I hope she comes to those meetings and gets her input on that, because that's all we're willing to learn.
Well, if the Water and West Water Authority is going to be reinstated, for lack of a little word, we are going to send out letters to increase the rates that are very soon, if that's, if that's where we're going.
Well, as the program that's on table, so there is no West Water Authority, correct? So, I think legislative needs to be the one to do this.
Oh, I think that's different.
I want to say, thank you.
I mean. So, what will happen is the authority will be in effect, but we'll have three members on there and they'll carry on.
How do, who makes those recommendations for the Water and West Water Authority?
I'll make those. The Tennessee Code has certain criteria that they, that are bought in which you look.
Absolutely, they have certain criteria that, and several people resigned, and you don't think that they can meet, and we talked about that, that you, maybe that criteria may need to change, is that correct?
That's in state law, but if you want us to continue with trying to find bodies put on there, I'll do that. to put on there, I'll do that.
And it's hard to find someone to serve on that board, correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'd like, Mayor.
I'll continue trying to find someone.
I'd like to know your opinion. I think the commission would like to know your opinion on this.
Well, Robert is, he and I have talked on that. He knows two people that have prior experience on that. He's said he would talk with them about their willingness to serve on that. He has not reported back to me.
And then how, how does it take to get them confirmed and passed and put on the Water and West Warren Authority?
Well, if they buy the next commission meeting.
Which is?
For June.
In June.
One month from now.
But if I rescind my resignation, we have three, so we can carry on.
Who are the other two?
Need two more members.
Who are the other two? If you rescind your resignation, who are the other two?
Major Bill Sykes.
Major Bill Sykes.
Major Bill Sykes and who?
Leader.
And Leader.
Leader. I'm fine with that.
So Margaret, you say that you would continue to serve? Okay. And I'll talk with Leader.
That's a difficult committee to serve on with state, and I mean, I so appreciate Ms. Cunningham doing that, and I hope that her mayor's office can work together. And Margaret, I thank you so much, because, and I hope we can work together and get this straightened out, because, you know, you know firsthand, this is something, this is a difficult situation. Thank you so much for that.
Does that have an announcement?
I would just, I would like to thank Mr. Fuller and his wife for coming aboard. I know, I think most of the district board members have left, the ones that were here. And Mrs. Welch, I would like to thank them for being here and, you know, the accommodations and stuff like that. Appreciate so much what you guys do for this community, and really appreciate Miss Welch for being here. And there's no way to subscribe how I feel for that. And I think we need to give them a standing ovation for all of that. So thank you very much.
Does that have an announcement?
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
No further comments. One wants, one class, a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.